I'd like to call the meeting to order today, the town council meeting for Tuesday, December 7. Chris, you're will you comply with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you. Would you please make the roll call?
Yes, sir, I certainly will. Mayor McCann?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Sir, Mr. Hawkins is on his way here. Mr. Ames?
Here.
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Lennox?
Here.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes, here.
Sir, all are present.
Okay, could please join us in a pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, indivisible, just as for all. Please today have Pastor June Wilkinson give the invocation. Pastor?
Thank you. Let's pray. Good and gracious God, we thank you for bringing us all together today. Help us to love and care for the creation that surrounds us and the people who call this island home. Give every inhabitant of Hilton Head food, a home, peace, security, safety, and love. I thank you for all the people gathered here who are dedicated to service and administration. Guide their steps and give us all the wisdom to make good decisions and the courage to follow through with them. We ask this in your many names. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor.
You're welcome.
Approval of the minutes?
I'm out.
Second, by the way.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise the right hand. Okay, first. Are there any changes we already did? Approval of today's agenda?
Move adoption is written.
What's that? One?
I said move adoption is written, yes.
Second?
Second.
The same, all in favor, please raise the right hand. Thank you very much. Okay, report the town manager.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Good to see everybody. I'll call on Sherry Mendrick, I guess I should say, award-winning floodplain administrator to give our 2021 update on the outreach projects and flood insurance coverage assessment. And this is part of our community rating system program for public info. So, Ms. Sherry, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, mayor and council members. I am Sherry Mendrick, the floodplain administrator for the town of Hilton Head Island. Enclosed in your packet is this your summary report for the Program for Public Information Committee meeting, which summarizes the outreach projects that we perform each year for credit in the community rating system. I actually presented this information to you as a five-year update back in January, where we had revamped the program and added some new outreach projects. And we are working through that process, trying to implement these projects this year. I would like for you to take note in the annual meeting summary that the committee, that our committee had a discussion which centered around risk rating 2.0. Risk rating 2.0 is FEMA's new rating methodology for flood insurance policies. Since the early 70s, FEMA has not changed the way they have written flood insurance policies. Policies were previously rated on whether you were in or out of the floodplain and how high your home was elevated above the base flood elevation. Well, beginning October 1st for new policies of this year and for renewed policies beginning April 1st, 2022, flood insurance will now be rated on the geographical characteristics of a home. The mandatory purchase requirement will still apply whether the home is inside or outside the floodplain, but for any homeowner that has a flood insurance policy, it will no longer be just that difference between the lowest floor and the base flood elevation. They are now taking into account the distance to the flooding source, the distance to the coast, the foundation type of the home, how high it is elevated above the ground elevation, and the replaced, replacement cost of value. What FEMA is trying to do is to even out the way that flood insurance policies are written, and they are actually have, are using the term equity in action. So the people who are at a higher risk will be paying higher flood insurance premiums. The committee agreed in, in our meeting that the 2022 outreach projects regarding flood insurance promotion will center around an initiative to disseminate information to our citizens about risk rating 2.0. So if you guys have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them at this time, and I appreciate your attention. Yes, sir.
Sherry is, is there any relationship between primary and excess flood, flood premiums?
I do not have the answer to that question. I would strongly encourage you to reach out to your flood insurance carrier. They would be able to get into the details of those differences.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You are, sorry, keep going. It is our intention to bring it back over. It's been on mute, sorry. Mark's giving instructions here today, so please be with us, please be patient. It is our intention to bring the town council meetings back to public at town council hall, starting in January 4. Bring the meetings back to there, then a public will be invited, then we will have some security measures in place. And then, and this is all dependent upon how the pandemic is at that particular point. So if the numbers rise for any of the new strains of the virus, or if it's worse around here, we will change our mind and stay at town hall, but we will move back then. I, I think it's a good thing. I think we all work better to be together in person. I think it's a good thing for the public that we're all together. And I think it will serve us all very well to be there in January. In addition to that, the December, the next meeting in December has been canceled for lack of agenda items. So after this meeting, our next meeting will be January 4th. God willing, in town hall, with all was here at the same time. Report by council members. This is Stand for Local Area Transportation Studies.
Yes, thank you, mayor. LATS had a meeting last Friday. I attended as the town's representative. And Siren was there as well. Refresh everyone, LATS is the regional transportation agency that controls the dispersment of funds. So it's a vital source to us here on Hilton Head, as well as to the entire county. First, we had a report from Craig Nguyen, who is the project manager for the 278 Carter Improvement Project. He reports that they are continuing to evaluate the MKSK revisions proposed to the so-called preferred alternative. He expects to have those comments and reactions completed by the end of January. He reports that they're still working on public comments. They got hundreds of public comments, and they're working on responses to those and summarizing those. He expects that to be completed later, probably in January. Another major project in our region that's underway right now is the expansion and improvement of Highway 17 from South Carolina 305 to the Georgia boundary. The problem with that road project is that there's not any solid earth to build a highway on. And so what they're having to do is go in and compress soil and so forth to make that a safe and improved highway. There will be a traffic light, though, installed in March is the schedule. That traffic light will be at the intersection of 305 and 170 as it comes through there. We've all gone through that intersection, and it's very, very busy. So that is, will be a nice improvement for us, starting next spring. Finally, there was a report from a contractor that is operated under contract with the county about evaluating the condition of all roads in the county, including those on the town of Hilton Head Island, including county roads, state roads, and so forth. And that condition report rates all of those roads on a one to five scale. And I am in the process of receiving that report, and I'll make sure that engineering has that report and that we use that in our planning for paving of town roads as we move forward into the future. That's my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. As I saw, you know, Mark and myself grew up in Charleston and Mount Pleasant the other day. I wanted to explain the super lighting with traffic signals we seen in Mount Pleasant.
Yes, the traffic signals that we've, we've somewhat touched on. One of the recommendations out of the MKSK plan with all of you was the adaptive intelligent traffic signal. I've read about them. I know Mr. Stanford has sent me his, his report on it. He drove up to, to Mount Pleasant, and while I was there, I took a detour and we drove through Mount Pleasant on Johnny Daws. And for miles, the signal systems were in place. And what was so interesting is to see at every intersection and every mast arm, literally a camera, an interactive camera that is monitoring and adjusting the, the traffic signals and flow. And so I do have a good friend, Eric Demora, who's the Mount Pleasant city manager, and I've called to kind of pick his brain on, on the functionality of that. And so, but what the good news is, is what was recommended, we, I saw firsthand, not just reading about. And good, have a real good point of reference from a fellow colleague on, you know, the functionality, the maintenance, the, the interactive part of it. So I think it would be a major benefit, not just to Hilton Head Island system, but to the regional network. And those are things that we've talked about with the county, with, with Eric, as well as others in, in the county as part of our conversation. So stay tuned for some more.
And speaking of Eric, all, all the work on 278 now and requests by the town go through Eric at the county. Eric has recently signed the IGA agreement with the state. And I've asked Mark to get a copy of that and distribute a copy of that to all members of council, okay? Okay, Jemmy, Low Country Government?
So, thank you, mayor. I do not have a report tonight for the Low Country Council of Government. However, if I can skip back to A, under General Reports and use my time there, there were a couple of things that I wanted to share. The first is that you may or may not be aware, but the Dove Street lighting is up again and operational. And I encourage everyone to drive through. It's amazing that for decades now, and returning this year, Dove Street has put on such a beautiful display of festival lights for all of the island to enjoy. They are collecting donations that I believe that they will pass on to Deepwell. But it's free of charge and for everyone to enjoy. Additionally, I had the pleasure on Saturday, Sunday evening of driving through the Mitchellville Festival of Light. And it was equally as amazing. And I encourage, if you haven't done that, I believe it's now over, but make sure that you have it on your calendar for next year. Having said those two things, I wanted to also talk about something that's overdue, but we were a bit preoccupied. I had the pleasure of meeting up with two of the amazing teachers over at the middle school, who invited me to see some of what's happening there, and I was proud and privileged to do that. While I was there, they shared with me a book that was produced with, by the students and staff of Hilton Head Island Middle School. It's kept, it's named Capturing COVID: Visions and Voices from the Middle. It was a collaboration with the Rotary Club. And as I read through it, you can't help and, but be impressed by the art. And when you take time to read the poems and information that's shared by these students about their experiences having lived through this year and a half, two years of COVID, and be somewhat emotional. This copy I purchased, and I'm going to leave here in town hall for everyone to look through. I would pick out one or two to read to you, but it would be so hard to choose. Every one of these pictures and these stories are worthy of time spent by everyone when you have a chance. They are available for sale through the middle school. And I would highly recommend, if you have an extra $20, you want to make an impression on someone about how incredible our schools are, this is the way to do it. So this is for the town to have and enjoy. I also wanted to share a book that was created by Bill Borg and Myra Scott, Myrtle, the Lagerhead Turtle. And we all know about Myrtle and her presence on the island. It's equally a beautiful book, well-written, and I think that we should encourage and celebrate those people on the island who are making such a phenomenal dis, difference in so many areas. And our ecology and our turtles are one place where this book highlights how important Hilton Head is to the world. So those two are my recommendations. Those are my reports under general, and thank you for your time and attention.
Mayor, I also have a general report, if I may.
Can I ask you first?
May I? Thank you.
Could you say something about Gail Quick and Sally Warren?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Today, I would like to pay respect to a public servant and longtime island resident. Gail Quick died unexpectedly last Monday, November 29. She served in executive positions at the Technical College of the Low Country and USCB. But it was Gail's contributions to Hilton Head Island that should be remembered today. She chaired the Planning Commission, was Vice Chair of the Land Management Rewrite Committee, served on the mayor's task force for the island's future, the Greater Island Council's Vision Steering Committee, Circle to Circle Committee, and was a founding member of the Hilton Head Island Institute. She also served on the Board of South Island Public Service District. But for those who served with her, it was not the list of organizations that truly represented her contributions. It was her insights, wisdom, and courage that made Hilton Head Island a better community. May she now rest in peace. Thank you. And I'll come back and say something about Sally, if that's what you like, but I don't have my notes in front of me right at the moment.
You couldn't find a nicer president than Gail.
Right.
Mr. Brown, Floodwater Commission?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report. I did receive your email about the beach conference. I'm trying to move some stuff around on my calendar, so I'll get back.
It's also the same week Alex has the Legislation Committee in Columbia.
Okay.
Just so you know, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Lennox, the Soloco Regional.
No, no report from Soloco.
Thank you very much. The same is on the airport?
Yes, the commercial aircraft parking apron and ramp are well underway with clearing and site prep nearly complete. Asphalt concrete will begin soon in March with, with a March completion date. The terminal design and construction drawings are nearly complete, with only details being finalized. And then finally, John Remble, the Airport Director invites everyone to try Tailwind Concessions at the Terminal. He says it's a great cup of coffee.
Thank you, David. Ms. Hawkins on Community Services and?
Yes, no report at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, go back to Ms. Ames again. Public Planning, sir?
Well, I'm, I'm busy. The Public Planning Committee met on November 18th, 18th to receive an update on short-term rental ordinance and to vote on a resolution authorizing the inclusion of the town pathway projects into the Beaufort County Connect Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. The resolution was approved and forwarded to council. The next meeting for the PPC will be on December 16th, and the agenda will include short-term rentals, e-bites, and beach parking. And I do, I do have my notes on Sally Warren, if you want me to read those now or do it later.
Yes, sir.
Now?
Yes, please.
Sally Warren, the longest-serving community manager on Hilton Head, is retiring from her 40 years of service to the shipyard community. Sally moved to the island in 1974, began working at Shipyard in the early 80s, and became its general manager 30 years ago. Shipyard has benefited from her effective leadership over those years. As Shipyard's Town Council Representative, I found Sally's knowledge and tenure valuable in addressing issues that affected Shipyard residents and homeowners. Her requests on behalf of Shipyard were reasonable and well-presented. I thoroughly enjoyed our interactions because of her easygoing personality and high standard of professionalism. On behalf of the council and the entire community, we thank Sally Warren for her service and wish her the best in her new endeavors. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much, David. Appreciate it. Ms. Lennox, Finance Committee?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Finance Administrative Committee met today with two agenda items under New Businesses. We reviewed and discussed the affiliated agency grant application process and timing. The proposed process was well-received by the committee. There will be some work done on more clearly defining some of the terms in the process. But we will be prepared to report to, to council on that shortly after the first of the year. The second agenda item was the five-month report on Hilton Head Island finances. The trends that were described by John Troyer, both on the revenue and expense side, were favorable.
Just one other thing here, before we get into Appearance by Citizens, I want to read you something here. Section 25, there's 70, Appearance by Citizens. Does any citizen of the town of Hilton Head who appeared before the council at a regular meeting during the appearance of citizens, it should be a member of the town, citizen of the town. Now, I'd like the Bills Committee to look at this, and for years, we've, we've disregarded that. And the reason being, we, people that are here on, on visiting, people that are here for second homes, we've always wanted to get their info along the way, and I think that's important. But if the council thinks it's important enough, we should change the ordinance to include those, everybody else. Right now, it just says citizens of Hilton Head. But we should change, if we think so, we should change it to include guests here, second home people here, and whoever else. So Bill, I'm giving that to you. You there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor. I'd be glad to take that on.
Thank you very much. Chris, you're Appearance by Citizens?
Yes, sir. Our first citizen to speak today is Ms. Ellie Short. Ms. Short?
How many do we have?
Ms. Short, please proceed.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Okay, my name is Ellie Short, and I'd like to voice my objection to Office of Cultural Affairs Plan funding professional development. Equity, diversity, and inclusion training, or CRT, has no place in our community, schools, and marketplace. Critical race theory is rooted in Marxism. It separates individuals into groups based on race, and it pits them against one another. Its fruit is not redemption, it's not reconciliation, restoration, and unity, but division, intimidation, harassment, and chaos. It's a threat to liberty, community, and democracy. CRT is a form of racism. It masquerades as a remedy to injustice and disunity. And I'd like to pray now for our town and nation concerning this equity, diversity, critical race theory. Lord, we come against this demonic ideology rooted in Marxism that would seek to divide our town and nation. You created man in your image, and we are all created to be your sons and daughters. And our identity is established in our status as children of God. The color of our skin was by your masterful design, and we will not apologize for how you made us, for this would be a direct assault to our Creator. We break and bind the lie over the minds and hearts of the people of our beloved nation that says that our identity is rooted in race and gender, and that white supremacy is rampant, its powers entrenched in our laws, our education, our language, and system of government. This is not true, and we stand together against this oppressive lie in Jesus' name. Lord, empower, educate, equip us to rise up and stomp down these self-destructive labels. The solution to ending racism is not another form of racism. Reveal to us and our leaders what is hidden in this dark teaching. Embolden our leaders, even in this town, to come forward with courage and confidence to speak truth and make godly decisions and good change on behalf of our town and our generation and the ones to come. We decree that Hilton Head Island and our leaders here will be an example of godly influence, honor, and justice, and they will not allow our standard of excellence to be lowered to unjust and immoral rulings. We pray that they will not cower in fear to appease these radical groups pushing this radical agenda, but give them courage to stand up for what they know is right for the people of our community. Lord, we pray for discernment for our town leaders. Give them a hearing and understanding heart as to what is right and wrong, truth and lies, and good and evil. We denounce the spirit of division. We denounce the spirit of hate. We denounce the spirit of deceit in our nation and the town of Hilton Head. We decree a spirit of unity, brotherly love, and truth into our community.
Thank you, Ms. Short. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Next, sir, is Mr. Eric. I just want to remind everybody, for Appearance by Citizens, each citizen has three minutes to address the town council and the mayor. Up next, sir, is Eric Somerville. Mr. Somerville?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
Okay, hello. My name is Eric Somerville. I am a citizen of Hilton Head Island. Thank you, Mr. Marco Lando, for the excellent work that you're doing in such a short time and being here on Hilton Head Island. And thank you to Krista, who does a wonderful job in ongoing administrative support. Hello and well wishes to all the council members. I look forward to seeing you in person on the 4th. That would be great, next year. We in the world and in this country are at a strange time. We have government organizations who are competing. Both the government entities desire to rule, albeit the, one is a non-government organization, the other is a real government. The United States of America has its government. The United Nations of the world also looks like, acts like a government. The U.S. wants to rule the USA. The UN wants to rule the one world with one world order, the entire world. The UN has been working since 1943, soon after World War II ended, and is succeeding. U.S. has the CDC. The UN has the WHO. The UN has contributed, continues to infiltrate the U.S. via the WHO and many other NGO organizations. All of this should be known about the UN. They've described it in detail in The Great Reset, a plan that most should know, but very few do. The Great Reset is well-in-live, and the current compelling target for completion is 2050. All should read it if you can. Today, the topic is OCA and for and against. I am for and against the Office of Cultural Affairs. I'd love it to be a wonderful organization. I don't know the people there well, but I would highlight the word inclusion, which is included in their document. There's other words, but these words have double meanings these days. They have a simple definition, demonstration, definition, but they also have a UN version of a definition. but they also have a U.N. version of a definition. If you know The Great Reset Plan, you will know the other details on that, on the word inclusion. I do not believe the Hilton Head residents who worked on the art plan and the OCA plan, strategic plan, were really aware of those other alternate definitions that the U.N. drumbeats on a regular basis. I do believe Future IQ, the consultant, and the work document that was referenced to produce our plan and the OCA plan were aware of the various definitions of the word inclusion. So at this point, I would hope and pray that this is...
Thank you, Mr. Somerville. Just one more reminder, we're keeping comments to three minutes today. We have a lot of citizens signed up. Our next, our next citizen is Felicia Nezepor, Ms. Nezepor.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am. Thank you.
Felicia Nezepor, Ward four. The vitriol coming from OCA supporters at the recent town council meeting is evidence that the OCA is doing severe damage to our town by creating animosity and division. OCA supporters made baseless, hate-filled comments about anyone who opposes taxpayer funding for secret CRT training sessions, calling us vigilantes, militia groups, white supremacists, racists carrying the banner of false patriotism, racists wanting to turn back the hands of time, and ignorance masquerading as patriotism. Those incendiary accusations were aimed at honorable, fair-minded citizens. CRT is opposed by the majority of Americans, including a plurality of successful black Americans. CRT, EDI, FBL, anti-racist training, and diversity training are merely new labels for Marxist teachings. These new happy-sounding labels were created to mask their underlying tenants that pit an oppressed group against an oppressor group. But the core Marxist ideology of oppressed versus oppressor runs straight and true in all of these undertakings. Accordingly, I think that towns should disband the OCA and eliminate the OCA budget for the following reasons. One, taxpayer dollars should not be used for frivolous purposes that benefit only a small fraction of island residents. And more importantly, two, any town activity that divides citizens and incites this kind of hatred should be eliminated. No matter what label is applied to it, CRT is a cancer that divides and destroys. Those who promote this cancer are telling our precious children that they should judge their friends by the color of their skin instead of the content of their character. CRT proponents endorse the bigotry of low expectations, telling our black children that their oppressing cannot succeed, and telling our white children that they're oppressors and should feel guilty about things that happened centuries ago. Children should be taught to love each other, be good to each other, and help each other achieve success. And adults should model these positive behaviors instead of preaching hate and division. CRT is fueled by the politics of envy and blames disparate economic outcomes on systemic racism instead of individual decisions each citizen makes about education, career choice, sacrifice, perseverance, and risk-taking. Under the CRT model, Dr. Ben Carson, a world-renowned pediatric neurosurgeon who came from very humble beginnings, would make the same salary as your landscaper. Every productive citizen deserves our respect, but the neurosurgeon certainly deserves greater monetary rewards as his contributions are of much higher value. CRT, in all of its incarnations, undermines that paradigm. The concept of personal responsibility built the most prosperous, successful, and inclusive economic engine in recorded history. The ultimate goal of CRT, EDI, et cetera, is to collapse that economic engine, eliminate all financial disparities, and rebuild our society into an equitable socialist Marxist utopia. That same ideology brought devastation, genocide, and famine to China, Russia, and Cuba under Mao, Stalin, and Castro, and that could happen here in the USA. We need to work together, starting at the local level, to prevent that, and disbanding the OCA would be a great start. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Felicia. Next, we have Sheri Bitner. Ms. Bitner?
Hi, Krista, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Hi, this is Sheri Bitner, forty-seven, Shelter Cove Lane. I'm very concerned about the Office of Cultural Affairs Strategic Plan being adopted, even though DEI has been removed. I listened to the three-hour taxpayer-funded video on diversity training that the OCA hosted. I heard members of the arts community using cendiary terms like white supremacy and white privilege. One attendee said, quote, "I think honestly we have to start teaching institutional racism in an honest way, beginning at the elementary school," end of quote. It was suggested that pretty much, it was suggested that they pretty much can't change the mindset of adults so that they can focus on the kids. In my opinion, the ideology of institutionalized racism tragically insists that we inform young white children that they were the oppressors while reminding minorities that they were the oppressed. To indoctrinate our children in this fashion under the guise of the truly noble terms equity and inclusion is a toxic strategy that tragically pits white children against black children. It has been reported that children have experienced depression and other emotional problems who have been told that solely because of their whiteness or the fact that their ancestors induced harm, that they somehow are also guilty of oppression. This is incredibly damaging to our young generation and in actuality sets us back as a nation. In my opinion, a tragedy of what proponents of DEI are doing, in part, is they undermine the very foundations of all the significant racial progress America has made and continues to make. I didn't hear anyone from the Hilton Head Arts during those three hours acknowledge positive changes, that during the period following the end of slavery, it was white philanthropy that set up schools across the South and set up those historically black colleges and universities, and that since the end of slavery, trillions of dollars have been funded to address the past and present effects of our history. How is it that members of the OCA-sponsored diversity training appear to be unaware that to be judged solely on the color of skin is in itself racist? So even though DEI has been removed from the strategic plan, it still permits these same groups to influence young people with their ideologies under the guise of the arts through the town's residency program and potentially eventually into the schools. So by adopting this plan, it is my view that the town council is unwittingly being complicit in perpetuating this divisive ideology. Members of the town council, it takes great courage to stand up against this. As an elected official, to go along to get along is in fact enabling those damaging ideologies to infect our community. This is your duty, this is our duty, to our impressionable children as well as to our community to stop this.
Thank you, Ms. Bitner. Next, we have Susan Gera Russo. Ms. Gera Russo? Susan? Ms. Gera Russo, Susan, are you on the line?
Krista, she is on the line, but has not unmuted herself.
Okay. Can we go ahead and move on to our next person, which is Shodan Lee, Ms. Lee? Ms. Lee, Shodan Lee?
Krista, Ms. Lee is on, and Shos is unmuted.
Ms. Lee, please go ahead. Your three minutes has started.
Hi, this is Susan Gera Russo.
Okay, Ms. Gera Russo, if you want to go ahead and begin?
Great. Mine is shorter than the three minutes. My name is Susan Gera Russo, and I live in Palmetto Dunes on Hilton Head Island. I'd like to make some comments on the Office of Cultural Affairs Strategic Plan. To start, I would like to thank my council member, Tamara Becker, for exercising her good judgment by requesting that the prior approval be rescinded so that a more thoughtful and thorough view of the document could be performed. It was a shame that this action prompted a false accusation of racism by a fellow council member who did so behind the back to the local newspaper. Being said, while this plan is certainly not perfect, it will better serve the needs of all Hilton Head Island residents, so I think it should be approved. One specific action I do take pertains to the section on professional development resource identification, number four in the strategy section. I do not believe that taxpayer dollars should be spent on professional development, especially when one isn't responsive to the needs of its members, which appears to be the case here. The results of the member survey in Appendix Five clearly shows that the members did not think that DEI training is a priority. It actually ranked dead last, with only nine of fifty-four respondents identifying it as a need. Yet this is one of only two training sessions held to date. Why? After watching a twenty-minute segment of the training provided, I got my answer. In the short span of time, in the short span of time, there was white supremacy, indoctrination, and voter suppression, surprisingly, as it pertained to the state of Georgia, like that is any business of the OCA, were mentioned. This clearly shows the partisanship of the council and the ideological agenda it is pursuing. What was very disturbing was to see the assistant town managers eager participation in the session, and her stating that town staff was looking to implement similar training throughout the town. I do not want one dime of my tax dollars to provide this hateful and factually untrue policies. There should be no place for it on Hilton Head Island, including and maybe most importantly, in schools. Parents are responsible for teaching their children about life and society. Education and educators should focus on cues and old moniker for free hours and other academic subjects. This is especially true on Hilton Head Island since many of the public school students are not at grade level. Schools and other community groups have no place in influencing children, frequently without parental knowledge or approval in non-academic areas. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you, ma'am. Shodan Lee? Ms. Lee? Shodan, are you on the line?
Krista, once again, she's on the line and unmuted, but we cannot hear her.
Okay.
Hi, Krista.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Lee. Go ahead.
Thank you. Town Council, before you proceed to vote on the Office of Cultural Affairs Strategic Plan for the next three years, please help us understand the Office of Cultural Affairs the key functions and responsibilities. Without the first step, it will be difficult to define goals and hold down officials accountable. After reviewing the forty-plus-page document, which was created with the Arts Council of Hilton Head, I surmise that the OCC's intention is to promote the arts and market arts and culture organizations, organize the annual lantern parade and crescendo festival, and promote social justice through diversity, equity, and inclusion. The question is, if you believe in small government, should the town government establish a department specifically catering to one sector, which already benefits from tax exemption status? Cities of Asheville, Beaufort, Bloton, and Mont Pleasant are all tourist destinations with rich culture and arts scenes. Yet none of them have offices of cultural affairs. The efforts are either led by volunteer comedies or nonprofit organizations. We have another example at home. The ABC Heritage Tournament is a huge tourist draw and a reputation-enhancing event for Hilton Head Island, and it's organized by the private sector, with the town government contributes two hundred fifty thousand through accommodation tax funds. So why can't we adopt the same structure for the lantern parade and the annual crescendo celebration? It should not be the government's job, or more precisely, the taxpayers' responsibility to fund the operations of arts communities permanently. Culture heritage can only be sustained when community leaders accentuate what unites us and what, and not what divides us, when citizens are encouraged to respect each other and to take personal responsibility in a sense of duty towards family, neighbors, and the community. The second aspect of the OCC's function as social justice warrior is more troubling. For example, one of its ideals of excellence is attracting and maintaining a diverse and multi-dimensional residential population. If multi-dimensions include economic status, should the poor remain in poverty in order to satisfy OCC's maintenance of a diverse residential population? Its interpretation of DEI, as referenced in the ICMA's website, is race and victimhood-focused. Because of CRT's remarkable ability to shape, shift into whatever form its advocates choose, Governor Harry McMaster signed into law a budget proviso in July to prohibit any partisan curriculum, not just the academic study of CRT, but its implementations through DEI and FBL. Clearly, the OCC's strategic plan attempts to solve a problem that does not exist. By doing so, it creates division among Hilton Head Island residents. So town council member, we cannot let it happen. One last question. How much will cost textbook?
Next, sir, is Matt Sweeney. Mr. Sweeney? Mr. Sweeney, please proceed.
Mr. Mayor and Town Council, my comments are related to the Office of Cultural Affairs, whose strategic plan clearly outlines things that one or more philanthropies should be doing, not a government office. Governments, including the township of Hilton Head, are structured to issue licenses, ensure compliance with codes and standards, and oversee the fire department and EMS to keep residents safe. Government is not designed to raise funds other than taxes, which have directly correlated and justifiable expenses. Governments are also not built to dispense charity. A report by the Philanthropy Roundtable concluded that individually tailored approaches, such as putting art in public spaces, artists in residence for various grade levels of school, and once-a-year arts events, were accomplished more effectively and efficiently by philanthropies than government. I know you understand this because it was just a month ago that the town council voted to surrender its responsibility to distribute one million dollars in COVID relief funds to a philanthropy on the island. I read more than a dozen IRS Form 990 reports for arts-related nonprofits on the island. Just three of them, the Arts Center of Coastal Carolina, the Symphony, and the Lean Ensemble Theater, listed in aggregate more than fifty board members and executive staffs, and together had received almost one million dollars in government grants in a single year. Those and other island nonprofits working with the Chamber of Commerce should be more than capable to provide and market local arts and cultural offerings. A few years ago, some academics evaluated seventy-one different studies comparing the efficiency of offerings of the same service from public agencies and private organizations. They concluded that nonprofits were more cost-effective than their government counterparts eighty percent of the time. The latest USC-Beaufort survey showed that three times more visitors come to Hilton Head for dolphin tours, fishing, and kayaking than they do for festivals and art activities. Why don't we have an Office of Aquatic Activities? The government should get out of the way and not pick winners and losers. Please vote down the OCC strategic plan and eliminate that department from our government. Thank you.
Ashley Phillips, Ms. Phillips?
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Hi, my name is Ashley Phillips, and I'm a full-time resident of Hilton Head Island. I have watched the training video of the Office of Cultural Affairs by the consultant Jorge Zabios, who was paid three thousand dollars by our county government. In case there are people who've not watched the video or know who he is, he is a self-proclaimed radical, and his position as Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer at Kellogg Community College in Michigan was eliminated in early 2020. The elimination of his position, coincidentally, coincides with a Facebook post showing him holding a sign featuring expletives at a protest against Donald Trump in December of 2019. Was this the best consultant our tax dollars could afford? Who chose him? How was he vetted? And who approved the payment? There are many things in this training video that are alarming. However, I will only speak to a few. If the art groups want to promote the arts, I think that's a great thing. But that is not what they were talking about doing in this video. One of the things mentioned was how to get DEI into our schools. It is up to the school board to decide what is taught in the schools, not any town employee or any of these art groups. The Office of Cultural Affairs Strategic Plan should not be approved. The town government should serve the interest of all citizens and businesses, not just special interest groups. It is not our town government's job to promote social justice agendas. I quite frankly find it disturbing that all town council members, with the exception of Ms. Becker, initially approved the strategic plan without even knowing or understanding what was in it. As an island, we are diverse. We are multicultural. We are inclusive. We come from all places around the country to live on this wonderful island. Can we do better? Always. But do not create issues we don't have. Stop trying to divide us and stay out of social justice agendas. It's not your job. We have very big issues facing our island, like figuring out our workforce housing crisis and protecting our gull of families and their land. The mayor, town council, and town managers should focus on these issues. The future of our island depends... The future of our island depends on it. Thank you.
Lisa Laking? Lisa Laking, Ms. Laking?
Hello?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
"The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Martin Luther King Jr. That is exactly what Tamara Becker has done in this whole issue with this EDI training. Um, against great pushback, and what I would go so far as to say blatant slander, um, she's held her ground, and it's on the basis of exactly what she was elected to do, and that was represent the people. She simply asked for definitions of the wording that was in the previous strategic plan, and the revised one as well, clarity of the long-term implications of that wording, and, very importantly, financial accountability and transparency. With our taxpayer dollars, I second the third caller's sentiment about abolishing the OCC, as that department has strayed from the initial good intentions and are now agenda-driven in spite of the fact that the EDI training ranked lowest in a recent survey of priorities, which was also mentioned by another caller. Um, additionally, I vehemently oppose the mayor's idea to limit who can address the town council. Um, there are, I believe anybody who live, works, and plays on this island has a right to how it's all set up. Um, second, homeowners pay more in taxes, for starters. What about all of the many thousands who live in Bluffton and come here to work? Their voices matter. Many of them are the ones struggling the most, and you're going to further marginalize Hispanic and African-American people. So, I just think, I will follow up on that as it works its way through. I just wanted to say that, um, I have extreme respect for Tammy and her standing up at this time, and, um, I don't think that I personally would agree with everything that's in the plan, even the revised one, but I'm going to trust Tammy to do what's right, and the rest of you should do the same. Thanks.
Jonathan Wilson, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, hello, mayor, members of town council, thank you so much for the opportunity to comment. My name is Jonathan Wilson. I grew up on Hilton Head and just returned to the island last year after twenty-five years in California. When I was growing up here in the seventies and eighties, the arts community flourished, uh, thanks in large part to the island's founding mother, Mary Fraser, whose vision for the arts relied on community support and involvement. Back then, arts organizations needed funding and support from the community, and I think that encouraged islanders to participate. As a kid, I was very active in the old community playhouse on Donegan's Alley, which was funded and supported entirely by the community. In fact, the community playhouse played a big part in my pursuit of a career in the entertainment industry. While the Arts Center is great, it doesn't seem as accessible for participation to residents. More than anything, the community playhouse brought people together in a special way. That's exactly what the arts should do, bring a community together. Sadly, the controversy over the Office of Cultural Affairs' strategic plan seems to be dividing our community. I think this is a direct result of the OCC's perceived intentions to promote a version of diversity, equity, and inclusion training that includes elements of critical race theory. As we have seen, this hateful ideology is tearing communities apart across the country, and why wouldn't it? It encourages people to view others based on the color of their skin and not the content of their characters. For my twenty-five years in California, I witnessed the corrosive effects that critical race theory had on communities. In my opinion, it has played a big part in the downfall of the once golden state, not to mention what it's done to the film and television industry. We cannot let that happen here on Hilton Head. Our community is too valuable. Let's focus on what we have in common, a love for this beautiful island. I don't think the town of Hilton Head should subsidize the island's arts organizations. It's simply not their role. Unfortunately, it's likely the town council will approve OCC's strategic plan. In that event, I ask that town leaders be vigilant with regard to critical race theory, and I call on all islanders to get involved and support the arts. Just like government, the arts will decay without citizen participation. Thank you for your time.
Grace Smith? Mr. Smith? Grace Smith, Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith?
Presto, Mr. Smith is on, but he is still muted.
I see that. Um, I'm going to go ahead and move to Cherry Norris, Ms. Norris.
Yes, she is.
Ms. Norris, Cherry? Um, Cherry Norris, Ms. Norris, are you on the line?
I'm on the line. Are you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, please proceed.
Hi, hi, you all. I'm glad to follow Jonathan, because I, too, I love theater. I have been, um, involved with theater and the arts all my life. I've been on every side of stage and film. I, um, also spent thirty years in LA, acting, writing, directing, producing. I love the arts, and, um, I think the Coastal Arts Center here is incredible. They do great work, and when I saw Mamma Mia in August, everybody was... What's happening? Can you hear me? The thing is not going.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, we can hear you just fine. Please proceed.
Okay, um, anyway, no, Mamma Mia was absolutely wonderful, and they had everybody on their feet, and I was super excited for this new season. Um, I love the shows. I could not wait to take my young friend to see Elf for her very first show. Um, I am a, I was a donor, a very sizable donor to the arts. Uh, but, um, as I was getting ready to buy season subscription tickets and make another hefty contribution, I saw masks are required. And, uh, if anybody knows how I feel about masks, it's all of you on town council, because we spent ten months working to overturn the mask mandate. And just for the record, I am not anti-mask, I am pro-choice. Um, what I find very disturbing is that everyone is included to come to the theater except the ticket buyer, who won't cover their face. And the Symphony requires a vax passport, even though there are no mask mandates or vax passports required in Hilton Head. This does not feel inclusive, it feels very divisive. Now, I want to say, organizations have every right to do business the way they want. However, I don't want my taxpayer dollars going through government subsidies to nonprofit entities when I can't attend the show because I refuse to suffocate or show my papers. If they exclude ticket buyers, they need to be on the free-market system and let the public decide if they want to support them or not. Otherwise, let's be equitable, and if we're doing that, I vote to support businesses like Ruby Lee, where everyone's included, black, white, liberal, conservative, mask, no mask, everyone's welcome for soul food and dancing. I am really opposed for the government entities, uh, to support businesses uh, who are acting like private businesses, even though they exclude the public. This is not inclusive at all. Uh, that said, I do support Tammy Becker.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. Uh, Grace Smith, please go ahead, Mr. Smith?
Okay, um, yes, this is Grace Smith. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, please proceed.
Okay, um, well, are you going to restart the three minutes?
Go ahead, sir, it's been restarted. Please proceed.
Okay, uh, my name is Grace Smith, and I live at eleven Wyler's Creek Way on Hilton Head Island. I'm here to vehemently object to the obvious agenda of the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs to infiltrate the Hilton Head Elementary and Secondary Schools, utilizing local artists under the guise of, quote, "art education" to communicate the extremely divisive and deleterious message of critical race theory referred to by those who are pushing this agenda as equity, diversity, inclusion. Towards this end, a three-hour, quote, "training seminar" was organized by the Director of the Office of Cultural Affairs for an audience of local artists and conducted by a radical individual who was fired from Kellogg Community College in Battle Creek, Michigan, after displaying profanity-ridden signs at a Trump rally. Lee Hilton Head residents had the privilege of paying three thousand dollars for his services. Those who think that it is the task of Hilton Head Town Government to inform our white students that they are, quote, "white supremacists" and privileged because of their whiteness, and our black students that they are, quote, "victims" and have been for the last five hundred years in this country, deny vehemently that that is what they are looking to communicate as they use "art education" to carry the message of equity, diversity, inclusion into our local classrooms. Yet a few very direct quotes taken from the video of the training seminar hosted by our town government appear to me to reveal very clearly what their clandestine and divisive agenda is. Allow me a few quotes. Quote, "This is a safe space. What we say here stays in this room." Quote, "We do plan to offer future EDI training sessions." Quote, "Eighty percent of the history of this country has been spent under different systems of legalized racial divisions." Quote, "I would describe these periods as, quote, 'white supremacy.'" And then the final two, I think honest, quote, "I think honestly we have to start teaching institutional racism in an honest way, beginning in elementary school." And finally, quote, "You have to start early. You have to start with the earliest education of the children." And there you have it. It's very obvious that the agenda of the Director of the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs is to train local artists to go into our Hilton Head Elementary Schools and by their own admission, inculcate in our children the overriding thesis of institutional racism. That intention to racially divide our young children into privileged whites and victimized blacks is and should be repulsive to everyone in the room today, and it should be absolutely unacceptable that any facet of our town government should play an active role in facilitating the delivery of such a message into our schools. For the above reasons, I would ask that you withhold adoption of the Office of Cultural Affairs' strategic plan until such time as the terms equity, diversity, and inclusion can be clearly defined and entered into the town plan block.
Uh, Patsy Bryson, Ms. Bryson? Go ahead, Patsy, you're on the line.
Yes, good afternoon. This is Patsy Bryson. Can you hear me, Ms. Weenmar?
Thank you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can. Go ahead and proceed.
Thank you very much. Pat, good afternoon, Patsy Bryson, uh, representing the Coalition of Island Neighbors, or COIN. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't join the town council in mourning the loss of our public servant, Gail Quick. She was a valuable ally of COIN, and we will miss her. I'm here to speak on two items on your agenda, twelve B and C. Uh, first of all, the fiscal year 2021, 2022 strategic plan, and secondly, the redistricting process. First of all, COIN supports our plan and its implementation. It is a monumental task to develop a plan for its implementation, and we express our thanks to the town manager and staff for taking on that task. We do, however, suggest postponement at this time, because the draft strategic plan was only made public on this past Friday. It's over two hundred and seventy-seven pages long, including complex charts. Also, the draft does not organize actions by fiscal year, and we, it's difficult to find the priorities for FY 2021 and 2022 without a careful review of the details. COIN urges town council to carefully review the strategic plan and to focus on this fiscal year, and to require quarterly reports to the public on implementation of our plan, including its funding. The dashboard reports used by the town on its website are helpful for that purpose. Secondly, with regard to redistricting, once again, COIN thanks the town staff for setting a population variance of no more than five percent in its criteria. COIN also thanks the town staff for revising the process, but is disappointed that the revisions do not include the task force and timeline suggested by COIN for public input. The proposed process includes a public charrette and public workshops, but the outline does not define or differentiate those terms. COIN suggests that the task force representatives suggested in COIN's proposal be specifically invited to the public charrette to assist with soliciting public input and providing public input. The process still includes individual meetings with town staff and the G.I., including the GIS staff. COIN suggests that this should be open meeting of the town council or its Finance and Administration Committee and not closed meetings. Finally, there's no public hearing on adoption of the new maps. In addition, the timeline is too compressed to accomplish the process outline, including the public charrette, meetings with town GIS staff, and public workshops for final action by the Finance and Administration Committee on February fifteen, 2022. We do admire the work of the Finance Administration Committee, but believe this timeline is too compressed. The timeline should and can be extended to provide for meaningful public transparency and input. It is what you do with the time you have that is important. Thank you.
Mr. Hoagland, Skip Hoagland?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, please proceed.
Afternoon, Skip Hoagland, Windmill Harbor. Also on the agenda today is a continued illegal issuance and use of tax funds by all nonprofits. Please note, it's a violation of South Carolina constitutional law to use tax funds to subsidize nonprofits that use, uh, use for private purposes that do not benefit the public, good reason or benefits. It's also illegal and worse to use tax funds, uh, for private nonprofits, like the 501DSC six Hilton Head Bluffton Chamber, who commits tax evasion on UBIT, unrelated business, unrelated business income tax. It's also illegal for the town to keep hiring the Chamber without first conducting a fair, transparent procurement bid process in order to choose a legal right entity for the job. Further, town manager Mark Orlando and lawyer Gruber, also council members, use public money illegally to buy Chamber membership for themselves. Therefore, as Chamber members, they have no business voting on or approving any public dollars to any organization in which they are members. Add, the Chamber itself is unfairly competing, selling advertising against its own members in violation to their own members, because they steadfastly refuse access to their books and records under the South Carolina Nonprofit Corporation Act law, and they do this as secret sauce, which is outrageous. Aside from these blatant conflicts of interest, the town should cease funding any nonprofits until they have a valid contract, they're legally operated, proper accounting controls, and a way to measure their performance in providing a return to the taxpayers. Tamara, I supported you yesterday on this, uh, on this Office of Cultural Affairs issue discussion. I now ask you to stop this illegal tax funding to Bill Miles and this Chamber, and force him to abide by the South, by South Carolina and federal laws by turning over all the Chamber accounting on where the millions of our tax funds have disappeared, including over one million to Canada. In addition, town must comply to my ATAX FOIA, and now South Carolina Turk, who asks you and all council members to abide by their directive. Tamara, as a council member, this is not about you picking what issues you want the town to act lawfully on, it's about all the issues. Any council member that votes in favor of more illegal funding to Bill Miles, who claims his use of tax money is a secret sauce and no one's business, must be investigated, removed from public service, and those who facilitated this secret tax robbery with Bill Miles should be arrested. This council's dysfunction, corruption, lies, fraud, and illegal use of millions of tax funds must end, and legal operations and insanity restored. Also, Mr. McCann, trips to Italy, first-class tickets, fraudulent Chamber contracts, hundred and fifty dollars lunches on taxpayers' dime, this corrupt buffoonery is over. You must stop also violating free speech. If you don't want to be criticized by me and others, then you stop your public corruption and clean up your act. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hoagland. Have a nice day. So that concludes appearance by citizens.
Thank you for all the citizens in here today. Uh, item number eleven, I'll do that.
Yes.
Item number eleven, consideration resolution approval of revised resolution authorizing and dedicating acceptance of Main Street. and dedicating acceptance of Main Street. This is a consent item we've talked about in the past. Does anybody have any comments on this?
Mayor McCann, we've lost connection with Mr. Hawkins, Mr. Miss Becker, and Mr. Stanford, and IT has run down there real quick to get them back online.
Okay. Take a two-minute recess.
Renee, can you hear us okay? Are we good?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Thank you.
One, two, three, four.
Thank you.
Now we've lost the mayor.
What did you do bad down there, Bill?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we're back in business here.
What did you do, Bill?
He touched a button.
Tammy sneezed.
Yes.
Give me a second for more.
Okay, sir.
Okay. Item number 11, the consent agenda, that's revised resolution for the authorization and dedication of the acceptance of Main Street. This is a consent item. Anybody have any discussion on that?
No.
Just raise the right hand.
We need a motion to approve that.
We need a motion approved.
Move for approval.
Second, okay, all favor, raise the right hand. Thank you very much. Okay. New business. Consideration resolution for the adoption of the Office of Cultural Affairs Strategic Plan. I was going to read along the thing I have about how long it took us to get here, what we did and everything, but you all know that already, so let's save a lot of time and move on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Hawkins?
I'm not sure if I heard you too, but if this relative to the OCA?
Yes.
Yes.
I learned 12.
Yeah. I would like to redefine strategy for page six entitled Professional Development Resource Identification with the following. The OCA, in its effort to assist local arts and cultural organizations with its mission and goals of achieving an inclusive and multi-dimensional community, will provide on its website as a matter of public record a listing of external resources which may help these organizations with the training topics listed in Appendix 5-2019, 2019 Professional Development Survey Results Survey Summary.
Okay, do I have a second on Mr. Hawkins' motion?
I'll second.
Glenn?
Yes, second.
Okay, so procedurally, I was going to say normally we take up a motion in a second before there's discussion. We haven't done that, but the motion was made and adopted to amend the matter pending before the board. So now would it be appropriate to take comment on the matter as amended? Okay, let's talk about the matter as amended. We might as well start in order. Mr. Brown?
I wasn't able to, excuse me, write as fast as Councilman Hawkins was speaking.
I'll be glad to repeat it.
Thank you, sir.
Slowly, Bill.
All right. Mr. Mayor, do I have your pleasure to repeat it?
Yes, you do, slowly.
Okay. The OCA, in its effort to assist local arts and cultural organizations with its mission and goals of achieving an inclusive and multi-dimensional community, will provide on its website as a matter of public record a listing of external resources which may assist these organizations or those organizations with training topics listed in Appendix 5-2019, Professional Development Survey Results Survey Summary, period.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Hawkins.
My pleasure.
The, I guess the portion that I'm going to focus on, there's a sentence here that says such assistance will be based on topic feedback and surveys of cultural community members. I understand that we're going to list the current survey results. Are we speaking to just the current survey results with your change there, or are we still allowing the opportunity for the community members to give feedback in the future?
Quite, if that question is directed toward me, it's accepted at, literally refers to that listing, period.
And Mr. Brown, you would like that to be faulted to say as ongoing surveys for the public, is that right? Is that what I hear?
Absolutely.
Hey, what's the feelings on Mr. Brown's comments?
Well, I'll jump in and speak up since there's a silence. The listing as addressed in the motion came directly from the previous strategic plan. It was those results that were, those items in those results that were identified by the arts community through a survey to 177 organizations, I believe, as I recall the number.
Right.
And so I think that's a large swath of arts community responses that have been identified and statistically analysis done of them and included in an appendice, I believe, number five of this document. So those are their desires and wishes, and so I think at this point that should be where we find what we're looking to approve in this strategic plan. So I would respectfully request that we leave it in their original words and desires and input with regard to the responses on the survey.
Ms. Ames?
Thank you, Mayor.
Good to hear.
It's, I shake my head. We should not be excluding the possibility for the OCA to have surveys in the future. If this language is doing that, then it should be amended. If the language doesn't exclude that from happening in the future, then I accept it.
I don't think it excludes them. If I may, as maker of the motion, it's not, my thought is not to prohibit the OCA at some point in time, if they want to refresh a survey, so be it.
Let me begin my comment, okay? I agree with Alex that there ought to be periodic surveys to update the information we have, because in six months or a year, the world will have changed. I agree with Mr. Brown.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I mean, that's consistent with my intent. The justification was never intended to place a limitation on enjoying input from others in the future through a survey mechanism. I'm just dealing with the facts as they are today.
Tom?
John, I think you can, you can address that, and I agree with Alex and David, by simply saying by the topics described in Appendix 5, comma, but not limited to, comma, a listing. If you add the words, but not limited to, that opens it up for future surveys and future topics.
You guys okay with that? You okay? As the maker of the motion.
David, you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, no, I just wanted the door to be open for input in the future.
Okay. As the maker of the motion, Bill, do you change your motion?
As the maker of the motion, I'd be delighted to modify it as suggested.
Is there a second for that motion as amended? Is there any more discussion on the motion? For the record? For the record?
I have a question and a comment. The question and clarification, I guess, is really, so it's clearly understood that this is an external resource list to be posted on the website and that the organizations are free to utilize the resource list to go into the greater community here in the state, across the country, or nation, or world to find those workshops, et cetera, that the organizations are looking for. That this is for them to take the information provided as guidance, as a resource, for them to find their professional development needs elsewhere, but not here within town hall, correct? We're all on the same page with that?
All right.
Okay, well, having said that, and I'm assuming I heard nothing, so I'd like verification of that because that is my understanding, is that, is that what we're?
I'll speak as the maker of the motion.
Thank you so much.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, and then may I, one last thing that I'd like to say. The changes are acceptable to me and as we're proceeding forward to create an opportunity here for, to move forward. One of the, we listened to a lot of comments, both today and in previous meetings, one that we were unable to hear from, but I want to make that voice heard, and I will try not to, to one, lose my voice, but also not to break up. David Ames was kind enough earlier to read a very emotional tribute to someone who I admired, who was a mentor to me, an advisor, and a friend, and that is Ms. Gail Quick. And she and I stayed in touch on many topics and debated, and she gave me good advices. We often, if not always, quite frankly, agreed. October 20th of 2021, I received an email from Gail. Her email was, "I and many others agree on your stance on this issue relating to Arts Council. Gail Quick would want us to make these changes that have now come forward and to look to the future for what's right for Hilton Head Island. So with all the respect that we've heard here today and admiration, we will miss her today and will miss her always, but she is also in agreement with us, and I want you to know that for the record. In addition, because we are virtual, it's very difficult for me, for all matters to be on the record, and we've heard from many folks who have called in, and those voices are on the record. We have public comment that we receive that unfortunately sometimes is, is so quick to the meeting that we don't get to fully read and analyze, but those are still matters of the record. I've brought with me today since close to 50 emails, probably we've all received the same ones, but I'm going to ask, these have been received since the last meeting, that they should be made part of the record on this topic because those voices need to be formally recorded. So with that, those are my comments, and I appreciate everyone in this effort, and I look forward to where we go from here, and that's it for me. Thanks."
Okay. Any more comments? Let's go. Somebody second, somebody second Bill's motion, right?
Right.
Yes.
So call for the motion.
We're now voting on the main motion, which is to approve the Office of Cultural Affairs as submitted and subsequently amended in tonight's meeting. Okay? With that, Chris to hold the roll.
Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor McCann?
Yes. And before we move on to the next one, Alex, I appreciate the conversations that you, me, and Mark had about this whole issue. It was good insight and a good discussion, Alex. I appreciate it.
Motion carried as amended.
Okay, 12B. 12B, consideration of a resolution for the adoption of the town's fiscal year strategic plan. This is a motion on the whole strategic plan, which includes what we just talked about a minute ago. Can I have a motion to accept this?
So booked.
Second, Bill in the background, thank you. There any discussion on this? Hey, everybody here has put in a lot of work on this from the council side as well as Watkins' team, and this has been a great team effort, and I can't thank you enough. Having said that, is there any discussion? No discussion, Chris to hold the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor, we were on mute, and I believe Glenn.
I did, I did have a comment on this if I could, Mr. Mayor. I want to express sincere appreciation to the town manager and his staff for an incredible work product that's been developed here. The town and the town staff now has a roadmap about how to proceed and when to proceed on the many, many issues facing this town. It is a great work product, and I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Here, here.
You want to hand up, Alex?
I echo the Stanford's comment.
Okay. I heard the echo.
I'm ready to vote. I think you were calling for the vote, is that correct?
Yes, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, I support the motion.
Mr. Hawkins?
I'm having a little trouble. Can you hear us now? I support.
Yes. Mr. Hawkins?
I support.
Mr. Ames?
Good job and yes.
Mrs. Becker?
I'm going to vote yes, however, I do agree that we have not had enough time, or I, let me rephrase that, that I haven't had enough time to delve in to many of the topics, and there are topics in this strategic plan that I think do need further discussion and consideration. So, my comment, thank you.
Comment to Mrs. Becker's comment is that we will have our retreat in June down Hilton Head to discuss this whole issue on this plan in June.
Make sure you ask that one in the record, your other.
And may I, while I have your attention, because, because we're moving back and forth on muting and unmuting here to keep the noise down from our feedback, when I asked for the emails to be put into the record and made my comments on the previous motion, that was recorded, correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mrs. Becker, I respectfully request those emails so they can be made part of the public record.
Yes, ma'am, I will give them to you. Yes.
Keep the roll going.
Thank you. Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McKim?
Yes. Consideration of resolution for the approval of the process, process only, of the 2020 redistricting of Hilton Head Island.
I move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion on this? This is not the redistricting, but the approval to do the redistricting. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Lennox?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, want to make counsel aware that I have spoken with the members of F and A Committee individually, talking about the timeline that we have in using this process. We all recognize that it is compressed. It's going to be tight. It has the proper amount of public interaction. But it's going to require a lot of work from staff and the committee. But we are prepared to undertake it.
A lot of work.
Thank you. And Mr. Brown, could you make sure, I know you do already, that you with Tom, you attend Tom's finance meeting? I think your input is very important.
Oh, absolutely, Mr. Mayor. I'll be there.
Just move on.
May I, may I jump in here? I believe Alex.
Maybe it's first, David.
Oh, David had his hands up, sorry.
I, I, there's been comment about public hearing. I, I'm comfortable that we are going to incorporate the public in a way that they're satisfied that their input has been heard. Secondly, does this vote today limit the flexibility of the 5%? Or do we have a choice on looking at whether we can go to 10% or something in between?
It's part of the resolution David has presented, yes.
Okay, I, my, my thought is, Mayor, that a more important ingredient or factor is community of interest. And so I would rather not get into a situation where the arbitrary 5% limits our ability to reflect community of interest. So I would suggest that we have some latitude as, within the process to recognize community of interest as more important than the arbitrary 5%. Or simply, but simply put it up to 10% where it was in 2010. That's the way we did it back then.
Mr. Will, you comment? So from a procedural standpoint, what we would need is a motion to amend because the, what is pending before the body.
Leave it the way it is.
The target would be 5%.
Just leave it the way it is.
Oh, no, let's address David's comments. Go ahead.
Yeah, so i- in order to effectuate, change the resolution, we would need a formal motion to change that percentage. In response to the question about communities of interest within the resolution, one of the ways in which we've tried to address that is by stating as a policy goal of this redistricting process that any minority representations that are currently present based upon the demographic data that was provided to us by the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office be protected and maintained as part of the redrawing efforts. So that was, that was our intent to ensure that communities of interest be respected as part of this process going forward. And at the same time, achieve a 5% deviation.
Does that answer your question, David?
Well, it, it, no, it does not, it does not answer the issue of flexibility, which I think is going to be important, given the little bit of review I've made and done, looking at the maps as they stand now. I think we're going to have to have greater flexibility to make this work.
Would you, would you like to make a motion to that, David?
I would make a motion that we adopt what was adopted in 2010.
To be determined, then we get into the process.
Be quiet over there.
What's 5%?
Yeah. Be quiet. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I, I hear almost a quorum of counsel deciding what should be done. My motion is that we use 10%.
Does anybody second David's motion?
I second it, but I wanted to make a comment to, to Mr. Ames' concern there, if I could. I mean, I don't mind second the motion. I, I just wanted to see if I can help here. First of all, I think this opportunity that we're going to have to engage with our public through this process is going to be absolutely critical to us having a good product at the end of the day. Okay, so I appreciate what staff has put in together there. Because Hilton Head.
Um, it appears Mr. Brown has, his connection has frozen.
Mr. Brown, can you hear us?
You know, define a lot of different ways, associations throughout the island. Am I frozen?
Yes. You were.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not sure where I left off, but I, I, I was trying to make the point of the community of interest. Okay, and I understand that we're, we're including that verbiage in this resolution. But because that definition of community of interest could be anywhere. I mean, we've got property owners, associations that are not necessarily behind gates, okay? And I, I, I feel as if limiting ourselves to 5% may limit us down the road. Okay, I've seen this with what has happened at the county's redistricting efforts, okay? So, you know, I don't know if 10% is the number. We're, we're only referring to that because that's what is allowed. I'm assuming that the 5% is here based on the recommendation from the Fiscal Affairs Committee. However, in 2011, we did adopt 10% as a community. So just allowing some flexibility there, I think is important to us if we're wanting to achieve that ultimate goal of protecting the community of interest.
Okay. All right, now, David made a motion, Alex seconded.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have a comment if I might.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, please. David made a motion, Alex seconded. Is there any discussion on David's motion? Mr. 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 Glenn?
Thank you, thank you. I, I don't really have a problem with stating that the 10% would be the max. But I think that our goal should be to get as close to 5% as we can. And nothing in this motion would limit us to just 10%, which is the same thing that Alex was saying just now. So I think we just, we probably have more flexibility. I was not aware, frankly, of the 10% gap from 10 years ago.
Any other comment on David's proposal? Tom?
Yes, John, if the goal is 6277 in each ward, 10% would allow the deviation to be 5% less than 6277. And the, the highest populated ward would be 5% above the 6277. So, that's the 10% variance, five below and, and five above. Uh, I think it makes sense. I, I, I would be more sensitive to maintaining communities of interest than I would necessarily, uh, one person, one vote.
Mr. Brown, let's see. Mr. Brown?
I can.
Tammy?
So two things. I was looking for clarification on what Tom had just said. And, but my comment before was, you had asked that Alex attend the finance meetings. If, I just want to correct something. I think he's on the finance committee. I'm the alternate, so I would like that invitation, please, to participate in those meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bill, you get to him. I can't see in the background.
Oh, all right, the, uh, I, I, I think moving to the 10%, my understanding mathematically is it can, it can swing from one to 10. Let's have that flexibility and see where it brings us. I think we all want to do the right thing.
Sure.
Want to do the, the best thing for the community. And we want to engender support from all people of the community for this, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
You want to reword, we do want to reword your, your amendment, your motion there, David, so we know what it is.
How is it stated within the document, Josh?
Right now, it's stated as 5% is the goal. What I would say, based upon the comments we've heard tonight, is being not to exceed 10% is what we would amend it to.
That would be my motion then. Thank you.
Okay, is there any discussion on that? Excellent, Alex seconded. Can you call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
What?
I don't know if Mr. Lennox was raising his hand as you were.
Yes, specifically, Josh, it's, uh, number three under the third whereas, where it talks about the variance of 5% or less. And I think we would change that to not to exceed 10% or 10% or less.
Yes, sir. Okay, done.
Amendment motions that one.
Okay, Christian?
To be clear, I'm, I'm calling the roll on the amendment and the motion.
That's correct.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Brown?
I support.
Mr. Harkins?
Support.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Yes. They're going on to lay out number D, consideration of a resolution for the approval of the issuance. Are we all here?
Okay, we are, but before you go on, can I, can I formally get that invitation from you to make sure that I'm part of?
It's a little, it's a channel, we'll invite you, Tammy, yes.
Thank you.
Approval of the insurance, of the issuance by Beaufort County Authority of its multifamily housing revenue bonds. Is someone here from the Housing Authority gonna, gonna address that?
Sir, Ms. Childers is on the line from the Housing Authority.
Angela, how are you today?
I'm very well, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Again, I'm Angela Childers, the Director of Beaufort Housing Authority. And I come before you this evening seeking the approval for Beaufort Housing Authority to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds for the renovation of Hilton Head Gardens. With me via Zoom is Ms. Paige Maseke with Vitus Development and Mr. Sam Howell with Howell, Lincoln and Nettles, serving as Bond Counsel. Vitus Development is seeking to renovate Hilton Head Gardens. And Beaufort Housing Authority is assisting Vitus in the financing of the renovations by issuing the Housing Authority's multifamily housing revenue bonds to provide a portion of the funds needed for the project, as well as to qualify the project for federal and state low-income housing tax credits. These bonds will allow Vitus to raise equity funds to pay a portion of the money needed for the renovations. Extensive renovations are planned, and Paige will be able to discuss in detail if you would like. And most importantly, Hilton Head Gardens will remain affordable housing. State law requires no other local approvals for the issuance of bonds by the Beaufort Housing Authority for this project. Federal tax law, however, requires that public approval be given following a public hearing by, one, the elected governmental body having jurisdiction over the issuer of the bonds, and, two, the elected body having jurisdiction over the site and the project. So for the Hilton Head Gardens project, the elected body having jurisdiction over the issuer is Beaufort City Council, and they have already granted approval. But the elected governmental body having jurisdiction over the site is you, Hilton Head Island Town Council. So we are seeking your approval. The Housing Authority gave public notice and conducted a public hearing with respect to the project on September 29th, 2021. No persons gave comment either orally or in writing in opposition to the proposed bond financing. The bonds will be payable by the Housing Authority solely from revenues derived from the operation of the respected project by Vitus and will be secured by mortgages on the respective property. The bonds will not be an obligation of the town, nor will they be a claim against the town's taxing powers or debt limit. For Hilton Head Gardens, the Series A bonds will be issued in the amount of approximately 11,500,000. The Series B note will be issued in the amount of approximately 2,500,000. The Series A bonds will be cre- will be credit enhanced by a mortgage-backed security issued by the Federal National Mortgages Association, Association, or Fannie Mae. The payments by Fannie Mae will pay debt service on the Series A bonds. Vitus Development will reimburse Fannie Mae for the, for the payments. As a result of this structure, the Series A bonds are rated AAA by Moody's Investor Service. This Series B note will be structured as a private placement commercial lender. Beaufort Housing Authority is committed to maintaining and retaining affordable housing. And we feel this is one way to do that and maintain the integrity of Hilton Head Gardens. Thank you for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Yes?
Uh, thank you. Thank you for the report. I am very pleased to see this happening with that project. It needs major renovation. You indicated that the bonds would be providing a portion of the needed funds for those renovations. Does the Housing Authority have the other funds necessary available, either through loans or otherwise?
I'm going to let Paige answer that for you.
Hi, this is Paige Miyazaki. I'm the Development Manager for the Hilton Head Gardens project over here at Vitus. And we are requesting the bond, um, bond inducement from the Beaufort Housing Authority. And we will also have a permanent construction loan from Fannie Mae.
And that permanent construction loan will be paid off out of the revenues of the project?
Yes, sir.
Fine, thank you.
Any other questions, Tom?
Yeah, what is the total project cost?
Total project costs, we have, is around 27 million. This is just, just as Angela said, this is a substantial renovation. We're looking at about $50,000 per unit in construction hard costs.
I, it's important to note that tenants will not be displaced except for a brief stay. I believe Paige has found an extended stay hotel for the ADA units, which must be brought up to code. And I believe Vitus thinks that it will take about three weeks, so they've already made those reservations.
That's good.
For an extended stay for only the ADA units. No one else will be displaced.
Thank you. Any other questions for David?
Yeah, thank you. Paige, I guess I'll direct this to you if I might. Are you contemplating any additional units on the site? Any new construction?
We are not. No new construction at the Hilton Head Gardens project. It's currently 112 units, and all 112 are covered by a Section 8 half contract. Though, as Angela mentioned, we will be renewing that half contract for an additional 20 years of affordability. And we will retain all 112 units.
I don't want to get too deep in the weeds because I'm not exactly sure it's relevant today. But just out of curiosity, are there going to be any additional or new site amenities? And will there be landscaping as a part of the project?
Yes, landscaping will definitely be added to this project because the project is, is quite vast. There will be no new amenities added, but more just restructuring the current amenities that are on site. There is a small leasing office. There is a small playground. But as Angela mentioned, none of those are up to ADA Accessible Compliance Code. So we will be bringing all common areas, all common amenities up to code standards for ADA compliance.
Well, I'm very supportive of the project. I think it's important for the community to. Well, I'm very, uh, supportive of the project. I think it's important for the community to have this renovation take place. So I'm ready to move on. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm I'm trying to get a little better understanding of the, uh, I guess the entities here. So Angela, I guess I'll ask you first, you currently have a binding relationship with Hilton Head Housing Partners, or I'm learning now Vitus?
With Vitus Development, yes, we do.
And Vitus is who?
Vitus is the developer, and I believe they have purchased Hilton Head Gardens.
So Hilton Head Part Housing Partners is who?
I don't know.
That is the borrower entity. So Vitus Development Four, which is the company that I work for, um, we are the developer. We're also part owner. So the ownership entity or the the borrower entity for the loans is Hilton Head Housing Partners LP.
So who is the managing partner?
Managing partner would be our general partner, which is Hilton Head Management LLC, Housing Management LLC, which is one hundred percent owned by Vitus Development Four.
Okay. Um, and Angela, can you just briefly describe your relationship with Vitus?
So we are the conduit issuer for the bonds for Vitus to be able to finance the renovations at Hilton Head Gardens. That's about the extent of our partnership.
Okay. And can anybody, uh, I guess give me a little bit more detail on why the tax code asks for, uh, a municipality to approve?
Sure. If Mr. Howell is available, I'll ask him to answer that for you because it is legal information.
Sure, this is Sam Howell. I'm a bond lawyer in Charleston and working with Vitus and the Housing Authority on this financing. Um, that's a, that's an interesting question. It it, Mr. Brown? Bonds are not only issued, you know, say for, you know, directly by Hilton Head Island Town Council to make improvements for the town, such as, you know, municipal buildings and services. But there are conduit bonds that are issued around the country where a private business, is this, in this case Vitus, is the actual owner of the facility that's financed with the bonds. They're called private activity bonds. And in South Carolina, they're pretty closely watched by the legislature. They they it can only do strictly what they're allowed to do, such as affordable housing or you, some of the major, um, economic development projects in the state get funded by these kinds of bonds as well, um, for, uh, major, um, industries. But in other parts of the country, back in the nineteen eighties, there were abuses that came about where bonds were issued by communities in other states to finance things like fast food restaurants and even massage parlors and suntan tanning lotion and tanning beds, salons and all. The Congress thought that that was abusive, so they, and a lot of the states, um, under their state law, just some appointed authority issues these bonds. So Congress now requires an authority like the Beaufort Housing Authority to issue these kinds of bonds has to go to an elected official, elected body. So that the elected officials can weigh in as to whether it's an appropriate w- way to use these kinds of bonds. Now, in this case, I would recommend to you that using, um, bonds under the federal tax code, they're supposed to be issued for affordable housing rental properties, uh, fits perfectly well with Hilton Head Gardens. And so I think you would not be going out on a limb to, um, to, uh, support this under the federal tax code.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Howell. And how how long has Vitus been in ownership of the complex?
We purchased the property in July two thousand twenty. Or sorry, oh my God, July two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, so brand new owners?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I will wrap up now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being patient with me. I'm going to take this opportunity, however, to say that I am pleased that you are moving in the direction of, uh, rehabilitation, uh, massive rehabilitation. I am continuously receiving phone calls from tenants in that complex, uh, telling me how unsafe it is, okay? Uh, so I really appreciate you, you, you moving forward. Um, I I'd also, uh, kindly ask, uh, I know that the, uh, the state code does not necessarily require this. But as you move forward with development, you work very closely with our town staff. Because that that area is definitely a part of our community. And we have very high expectations when it comes to what goes into a community, okay? So, um, I think we have an opportunity here. Um, unfortunately, uh, that that area has been one that has been in the shadows for too long. Uh, appreciate a developer coming in and giving it an uplift. Um, so we welcome you to the part of the community and ask that you be a part of the community as you move the project forward. Thank you.
Any other questions? Tammy, you get your hand up? Yes?
I do. Um, I have, uh, two questions, I think, and a comment. First of all, I think this is a great move. I think that it was aptly described as, um, something in long overdue. At that site, I've had many tours through there and spoken to many of the residents. And, um, I'm hopeful for the future, for their future at this point. Um, part of the question that, uh, Ms. Trains asked had to do with amenities. Correct me if I'm wrong, but at some point, and maybe even currently, I hope, there was a, um, Head Start program that was being run in, um, the back offices, as I was, as it was described to me, that there was a program there. Um, and, uh, if that's so, will those spaces be brought up to, um, to code and to expectations for early childhood education?
Well, thank you, Council, Councilman Becker. Um, the Head Start program is actually across the street at Sandalwood, and it has been, it has undergone substantial renovation as well, including their playground.
Okay, so there's the space where the children gather for the, i- is there an ongoing program there currently?
There is, and it is active. Yes, ma'am.
It is active. All right, I'm, it, since it's at a different location, I'll stop my questions now, but I'd be interested in knowing about what the facilities, um, are, um, at this point that the children are being, um, taught in. Um, my other question was with this project, um, it was mentioned keeping up with Hilton Head standards, which is obviously, um, was, which is obvious. Will this project need to go through any of the DBR, um, site approvals? Development approvals? Do we know?
I would think so.
I'll let Paige address that.
This is Paige. I'm unfamiliar with the DVR. With what's DVR?
Design Review Board here on Hilton Head, um, that, um, projects go through that committee to make sure that they, um, mostly its exterior design is consistent with Hilton Head character, island character.
I will check with our construction manager, but I do believe that it has because we did have a very extensive review of our plans um, in order to receive building permits. Hilton Head.
All right, um, I'll I'll just stay on and ask that question again at a later time, um, to follow up on it, but thank you for your time at this point.
Glenn, you got a question? Glenn, did you have a question?
I do not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, having answered, yes, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, just, just so that we are clear, uh, that's why I asked the question of Ms. Childers, her relationship with Hilton Head Gardens. I don't want us or the public to be confused here. This is a bond that is going to uplift Hilton Head Gardens.
Right.
Sandalwood Terrace.
Right.
Beaufort County Housing Authority has jurisdiction over is the other complex that is still desperate need of uplift.
That is correct. Yes, and we are, we do have a plan for that. We're just not ready to bring that forward at this time.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, and, um, we look forward to those plans coming forth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll, please.
Oh, actually, no, I need a motion in a second on that to approve that.
Uh, move for approval.
Second. Roll, Christian.
Mr. Harkins?
Move, yes.
Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Linda. Uh, I am in ease consideration, consideration or recommendation by the A-Tax Committee? Motion on that?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Do I have a second? Okay, any discussion by that? Thomas?
John, clarification on Hilton Head Concours de Delegats. The amount approved by the committee was how much? Jim?
Miss, Mr. Lennox is Jim Fluker, uh, the chairman of the committee. Uh, you know, you're looking probably at our page three of our recommendation, which is your page three seventy-six of the.
Yes.
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 That question was three oh seven. That's a misprint on that right side aisle. So it should be three oh seven. On both. What they asked for.
That's what I, that's what I thought.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on this?
Thanks, Jim.
Alex?
Uh, yeah, um. I'm not sure if these are questions. Just a couple of comments I wanted to make along the way. And thank, uh, Mr. Fluker and his, uh, his team for uh, putting together the information and doing such a thorough job with, uh, with the process. I understand that there are only two applicants that did not receive funding. Just a, a couple of notes here. I I I see that the airport is, uh, receiving a hundred and sixty thousand for, uh, I guess additional airline service, okay? Um, and, um, you know, this, this, uh, this airport, of course, is, uh, one of the front doors to our island. We need to make sure that we are absolutely putting forth our best effort. Um, I do have some grave concerns about how much we are marketing and how big we're trying to be, particularly when it comes to attracting the airlines. So I just offer that as an observation, um, from council and constituents. Um, and the, the other one, um, the, the move of the fifty K from, I guess, the Hilton Head Golf, um, to the Hilton Head Chamber. Um, in keeping with the intent of our plan, um, which includes our, uh, Parks and Rec, uh, master plan. Uh, in the future, we will more than likely see other sports activities potentially become attractions to our island, okay? And I want to make sure that, uh, if there are entities or organizations that are promoting those, i.e. pickleball, that there's, uh, there's going to be monies available and that the chamber is not necessarily just gobbling it all up, okay? Um, so those are just my two comments, uh, as I went through the, the information. Again, thank you for being so thorough.
I'd be normal questions. Christian, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Mr. Fluker, congratulations on the outstanding work that you and your committee does. I continue to have nothing but confidence in the process and your recommendations. Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes. Okay, moving on to, uh, discussion of the contractual matters pertaining to the town manager. Uh, it is my pleasure to put on the table here now, uh, we talked about a three-year contract for Mr. Orlando. Uh, no salary increase at the time and a fifteen thousand dollar year-end bonus. I have a motion on it. Mr. Stanford made a motion, second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that?
Uh, I just one comment. I'm I'm delighted with the, the three-year contract. Uh, we're very fortunate to have somebody, uh, like our town manager here, Mark Orlando. And, uh, I think we're sending a clear message to him and to the community that we hope he's a, a long-term player and partner with us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brown?
I'll, I'll, I'll answer the roll as I also echo, uh, Councilman Hawkins' comments. Uh, Mr. Orlando, uh, job well done in the short period of time that you have been here. Uh, really appreciate your, your commitment, um, your effort. Um, you've put on your running shoes. Um, you're going to need you a few more pairs for the next three years, uh, because we've got a lot of work to get done here, okay? Um, so I support the motion.
Mr. Brown, uh, Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Harkins?
Uh, yes, and I'm smiling here because I enjoyed Mr. Brown's, uh, athletic, uh, reference there.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
I'm proud to support this motion, yes.
Mayor McCann?
And I'm also proud to support this motion. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Do we have, uh, Mr. Orlando, do we have a necessary to go to executive session?
Yes, sir, to discuss negotiations related to the proposed sale or purchase of property in the Bayberry Lane area per FOIA Act thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two. I have a motion to go into executive session.
Hello.
All favors are right hand. I will take a couple of breaks and go into executive session. Okay. Okay, we're back from executive session with nothing to report. There will be an item, a follow-up on the item on the January fourth agenda, which Christian will be putting on. Before you leave me, I want to wish you all a good holiday. It's been a good year. Good, and we don't agree on everything, but we get along at the end, so thank you very, very much. Good holiday to everybody.
Everybody, happy holidays, Merry Christmas.